Thank you. Now, please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as customary, we'd like to have a moment of silence. I need to announce that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Whitman-Hansen Cable Access. I need a motion to approve bill on payroll warrant. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
A second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to accept correspondence in the refile. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Aye.
Public forum. Anybody here wish to speak in public forum? Yes, John.
Good evening. John Galvin, High Street. It's come to my attention that the Board of Assessors is having a meeting on September 2nd. At that meeting, they are going to be discussing and voting on the possibility of returning funds from the overlay account, up to $200,000 to $225,000. I understand that this is basically one-time money, and it's not a long-term fix, but it is a stopgap for funds to fulfill promises made to maintain level services for public safety this year. I would urge the Select Board to support the Board of Assessors in approving these funds to be returned back to the town so that they can be used in fiscal '26's budget.
Thank you, John. Yeah, were we just talking about that at our meeting?
Thank you, John.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve meeting minutes. Our open session, March 25th, 2025. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Chairman's report. I have a couple of things. First in line, Tracy Sealy, who was one of the editors for Whitman-Hansen, the newspaper, she was retiring, and I want to wish her well. I saw her. She was at our building committee meeting for the DPW, and my wife and I happened to be in OSHA State Job Lot in East Bridgewater, and she was there too. So my wife and I both said congratulations again. So I wish her well and a great retirement. Second of all, I'd like to thank Richie Rosen for running the 150th anniversary of the town and what we, the big final one with the fireworks and the band. There was like 400-plus people there, in the field and in the park. Outstanding. He did an outstanding job to celebrate everything about Whitman. Can I think if I have anything else? Anything else? Can you think of anything else that we should thank the people for doing?
The committee that worked with him.
Oh, yeah. And the full committee. I'm sorry, yeah. I don't know the full list of them, but I will say they all did just a great job. Right from the very beginning, when they had the dinner at Spellman Center in the church, and I've been in that building a lot for different functions, and it looked like there was a wedding going on there because it was set up so nice. They did a great job. I think Michelle Lamatina did it. Yeah, she did a great job. Anyways, I just wanted to thank them for all the functions that we had and help everybody get their shirt. If I was thinking about, I was gonna say that. I would've worn my shirt today, but no. Okay, we have a, is it 7:10 yet?
If I could suggest maybe we jump down under new business and take care of several of the items until 7:10?
Sure.
If you want to jump down to new business?
Yeah.
We'll start there?
Yeah, which one do you want?
Just start with the first one. We'll pass over.
Okay, yeah. We're gonna pass over under new business, the recognition and retirement of Mary Hoochie from her position as a Crossing Guard Special Constable. She's not here tonight, so we're gonna wait until she can be here and we can recognize her. Is it?
Nope, I just keep going. We probably could get through three or four.
Is it 7:10 yet?
Nope.
No.
What else? Act on reapportment of Sharon Pegolo to the position of Assistant Treasurer Collector through June 30th, 2026. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
And this is just a correction that we should've done when we unappointed her as the Treasurer Collector interim?
Correct. So we did. We appointed Deb O'Brien, and we said that Sharon was going back as the Assistant Treasurer Collector, but a formal vote wasn't taken, so we'd just like to say that.
This is our formal vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. We're legal. Is it time yet?
Nope.
Act on rescinding the appointment of Christopher Lee from the position of Auxiliary Police Special Office, Police Officer, effective July 1st, 2025. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
I'd just like to say thank you very much for what he did for the town.
I would like to say that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Yep. All in favor? Aye. Hope he has a great retirement now.
Yes.
Act on the appointment of Kevin Lyman to a member of the Whitman Recreation Commission for a three-year term through June 30th, 2028, in order to fill an existing vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments that I have? I want to thank him for doing that, stepping up, and we need a lot more people to step up onto volunteering for different committees and just to help the town out. There's a list of them. I want to thank Justin for putting the list out and Josh IIT for putting the form that you fill out when I made that comment on the town Facebook page. And those things can be found on our website. So if anyone's interested in joining a number of different categories as far as committees and boards, look it up, see what you might be interested in, and we'd be glad to appoint you. We need them. And we also need more on the recreation. This is one. We need a couple more. Anyways, okay, all in favor? Frank?
Aye.
It's not Frank.
I mean Kevin. I know I'm frank too long. Act on the request of Eleanor, was it Morrow, on behalf of Southeastern Philharmonic Orchestra for permission to use the Town Hall Auditorium to conduct a Christmas concert on December 7th, 2025, at 2:30 p.m., and a spring concert on April 26th, 2026, at 2:30. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any question? No, we do it every year. All in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of the Whitman's Mother Club for permission to use the Town Hall Auditorium on Saturday, November 11th, 2025, for a wine tasting event and approval of the one-day liquor license for that said event. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm glad to see this is happening again. Does anybody up here wish to speak on that issue? You all set? I mean, it's nice to have that coming back. We used to do it, you know, as Friends at the Park. We used to have it every year. But thank you for coming back. Okay, all in favor? Aye, you got it. I'll see you there. Even though I don't drink.
Do one more.
Take action to reappoint George Vermiss to a position of Constable for a three-year term through August 6th, 2028. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now?
7:10. Yes.
7:10? Okay. Now 7:10, we have a hearing meeting, a public meeting on the application of Unique Autos Group Incorporated. Excuse me for probably pronouncing it wrong, but it's Thiago Pimenta?
Yes.
For a Class II Auto Dealer's License on the premise located at 728 Bedford Street.
278.
Huh?
278.
What'd I say? 278? What did I say?
728.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
278 Bedford Street, subject to a final inspection approval of the Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer, and receipt of the license fee. If approved, take action to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License for Unique Auto Group Incorporated on the premise located at 263 Bedford Street. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that first motion to approve the license, and then we'll...
It's all under the same thing, so that's why I read it off. Okay, a second to approve the license.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to make a second for the second part?
Sure, then I'll make a motion to rescind the license at 263 Bedford Street.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now, would you like to get up and say anything? Make a quick thing?
Thank you.
Okay, that's all it means.
Good luck with your business. God bless.
I mean, you got like three minutes.
It's a good plug.
Or you can go back for another two minutes? All right, act on the request, Brittany Delaro to be appointed to the position of Member-at-Large of the Economic Development Committee for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30th, 2026, in order to fill the vacancy. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second. Ty, Ty goes to you.
All right, any discussion?
Just, this'll tie into the next item, so we'll just, I think we can probably hold it. Well, if you look further in your agenda, I'm later on going to suggest we restart the Economic Development Committee, so Brittany would be the first appointee to that committee. But I seen a reason why we can't act on it.
All right, do you want me to also add to it for you?
No, so I think...
That's next.
We still got time, right? May as well read off. So in, I think it was 2015, the board formed an Economic Development Committee, and if I can find the part of the back of the agenda that has the list of members. It was three at-large and representatives from the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Assessors, and the Zoning Board. There we go.
Have you covered for the representative from the Select Board?
So it was you, Dan. I'd be happy to take your spot if we're restarting this.
I will see. Yeah, because I'm on a lot of boards.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that worked for me.
Okay. And so, yeah, I think the result of the override told us to look elsewhere for money, and the Economic Development Committee could probably point us in a couple of directions. Talked to someone at Old Colony Planning Council who gave us some good recommendations to get started. So.
Okay. All right, so we had a motion and a second on that?
We had a motion and a second for Brittany, right?
Okay.
We'll wrap that up, and then I'd like to speak on the Economic Development.
That's right. All right, we'll wrap it up. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, John?
Would it be helpful to have a formal, like if I formally was to say, you know, I recommend that Justin take over as Chair of the Economic Development Committee just to give him some authority to spearhead that? Makes sense?
I don't think we can make a Chair until the rest of the committee forms, but I could be the Select Board Rep and try to organize a...
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion that he's the Select Board Rep to spearhead that committee.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Maybe just set the meeting schedule quickly for September?
September 1st, yeah.
I'm thinking the 9th and the 23rd, only because the 2nd is the day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
So if that works for everyone, the 9th and 23rd.
Wait a minute. I don't... Because I'll be being operated on by my ankle.
What date are you getting operated on?
26th. So I'm all set. Yeah, those two days work for me.
Work for me.
And not the 2nd, but the 9th?
Huh?
The 9th.
Yeah, both of them work for me. So it's the 9th and the 23rd. Okay?
Good.
Oh, and I can sit, get into the...
Just one minute, Dan. Yep, ready.
Ready for the second one? Okay, we need to go into a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, and the Town of Whitman General Bylaw, Article 27. A complaint filed by Linda Minehold of 66 Washington Terrace against a dog allegedly owned or habited by William Healy of 30 Washington Terrace. Okay, the meeting is open? Laura, yeah?
Exactly.
Say to one of the ACO officers.
And do you just want to say that there's no objections while we're in the hearing?
Yeah, oh, right. And Mary Beth is gonna run the hearing.
Okay. Good evening. I am now calling this hearing to order. This evening, the Whitman Select Board is holding a dog hearing as a result of a complaint of June 25th, 2025, by Linda Minehold, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, and Article 27 of the Town of Whitman General Bylaws. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the dog Coco, owned by William Healy of 30 Washington Terrace, is dangerous, is a nuisance, or is neither. A determination of the hearing outcome will be made in writing after the hearing has been conducted by the Board. The rules of the hearing and introduction. Before starting the hearing, I want to introduce myself and explain the rules we will be following today. My name is Mary Beth Carter. I am the Town Administrator and will be presiding over this hearing. It is my job to enforce the rules of the hearing. I will also swear in all witnesses wishing to speak. I will hear all testimony for the purpose of gathering relevant facts and will make a determination concerning the complaint after the hearing has ended. The determination will be available in writing within 10 days after the determination has been made. It'll be available at the Town Administrator's office and will also be mailed out to the involved parties. The rules we will use today are straightforward. Number one, first, all persons who wish to speak today must sign in. So if you plan on speaking in this hearing, please come up. There is a signup sheet here, and make sure you fill that out. And you each must provide his or her name, address, email, and telephone number. Second, all those wishing to speak must be sworn in by me. The swearing in will be conducted at the beginning of this hearing, with all speakers being sworn in at the same time. Third, I will acknowledge, for the second, I mean, for the record, documents previously provided in this matter. And fourth, all speakers will be called by name and given an allotted time to speak, five minutes. If a speaker feels he or she may need more time to speak, he or she may ask me to grant that additional time. Joe Kenny, Animal Control Officer, will speak first and will relay his written report. All other speakers will have five minutes, and I will ask all speakers to direct your comments to the issue only. The order of speakers after the Animal Control Officer will be as follows. First, the complainants, followed by any speakers who wish to speak in support of their position. Next, the dog owner, followed by any speakers who wish to speak in support of their position. During the testimony period, the speakers must first state their name and address for the record, and then continue with their testimony. Speakers should speak only to the matter at hand. Obscenities, threats, fighting words, and defamatory remarks are prohibited. The Vice Chair and other members of the Board, through the Vice Chair, may ask questions at the end of each speaker's testimony. Members of the audience must be silent and respectful while each person is speaking. Outbursts or interruptions from members of the audience are not allowed. So I believe everyone has signed in, but if not, please do so now. And swearing in to all the speakers. Yep, if you will, just fill that out.
And Mary Beth, if I could jump in and say that the applicants for the Unique Auto Group are under no obligation to stay for a dog hearing, if you guys want to leave.
Okay. No, you can leave. You're all set.
Unless you're really interested in this.
As of the most...
Well, that's community involvement right there.
In case they get a dog, they may want to be here. They might have a guide dog they had in their place.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that needs to sign in? Do you plan on speaking at all?
Not really, but if I had to, then yes.
Then you would need to sign that if you plan to speak at all.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Good luck with your business.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, so to all the speakers, if you could stand up, please, and raise your right hand and state, "I swear that the testimony I am about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth." If you can swear that the testimony...
I'm about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Okay. I am acknowledging the following documents as part of the evidence in this matter. A complaint from Linda Minehold dated June 25th, 2025, certified notification of hearing to William Healy dated August 5th, 2025, certified notification of hearing to Linda Minehold dated August 5th, 2025, and an email from Joe Kenny, his account of the calls that he has received, and that was dated just this past Monday, that he sent that to me. The Board will now hear testimony, and I will call each speaker by name. Please step forward to the podium when your name is called. The first one is Animal Control Officer Joe Kenny.
Hey, how's it going, guys? So these are reports of kind of like the general gist of the past couple of years in regards to William Healy's dog at 30 Washington Terrace. There was four reported incidences, two of which did result in bites, and two of which were not considered bites. They're more encounters. All of the accounts were the dog getting loose through what seems to be the front door in most accounts, that's where it was assumed to have come out of. The first account going chronologically would be back in August 14th or 15th of 2023. That was an incident in which the dog got loose, ran out, and grabbed another person's dog. Hang on, there's too many names involved in this to remember them all. That would have been...
What date was that? August 14th?
August, yeah. It's actually in your documents.
The Cunningham?
Listed as, it starts off about a year and a half ago, walking my French Bulldog, Gigi. That would be, Gigi is the dog that was involved in that one. That one was back, that was actually in August 14th or 15th that it occurred, and of 2023. That dog was walking a couple of houses actually away from where 30 Washington Terrace, and the dog from 30 Washington Terrace got out, went after the dog, and the woman, while walking her dog, was scared. A truck driver ended up driving by. She jumped into the truck. We instructed her, after she had contacted us later in the day after the dog had seen a vet, and I advised her that the dog would be put under quarantine through the Board of Health, and she wanted to make sure it got reported, so we made notes of what happened. And I advised the Board of Health about the issue, and that's about where we end with it. Then the following call that I got on the same address would have come in January, I think, okay, I think it happens January 2nd. Shuffling through these. And that was of 2023 as well. That was a neighbor's dog, and they had their dog out in the yard on a leash being walked, and the Healy's dog got out, ran out. There was an interaction between the two dogs. There was no broken skin or anything like that. But the two dogs did get into an aggressive altercation in the yard on the opposite side of the Healy's, so it ran across the neighbor's yard and over to their dog. The following chronologically in events would have been Linda Minehold's complaint, in which she was walking her dog past the house. The dog got through the front door, came out, went after the dog. Her dog was able to make it away from the dog. She had tried picking up the dog. Then the dog was dropped and then ran off, and another neighbor had come by at the time. Trying to remember which one it is. So give me one second here. There's too many of these to kind of slide through here. Sorry. Linda's was the one where she picked up the dog. Her dog ran home, and she was able to scare off the dog using an air horn. I believe she was involved in another, the most recent one, with an air horn as well. That's why I was confused. I think it was somebody buzzed an air horn, and I don't remember who it was, but with Linda, she had an air horn on her. She sounded the air horn, and it diverted the situation, and the Healy's dog was recollected before anything major happened. The latest one was the April 16th, trying to go back here, in which the dog was being walked around. Again, the dog was walking past the house. It was putting barking, and the dog got out of the front door, ran over to the dog, grabbed the dog. The dog had, it was shaken, and was brought to the VCA. After the VCA in Hanson saw the dog, I was contacted later in the day, and I told them that same thing, whereas the VCA had seen the dog, they should be sending paper out to the Board of Health and to make sure they get in contact to do a quarantine for the dog. Took some notes on it, and that was where it ended. That situation also had, I think it was Linda, I'm not sure. Somebody came by with an air horn. I just had my notes, so I wasn't sure if it was Linda or not, but somebody at that time also sounded an air horn and stopped the aggression. And that's about all I have for these. So there was the three separate things, two bites, and they all seemed to be that they got through the front screen door.
One question.
Yep.
On January 2nd, when it was Alex and Shannon and Alex DeBois' dog?
Yes.
On the right, it says Coco got loose from Margaret and ran directly towards Lucas. So was Margaret walking the dog?
I think she was coming, I think she was coming through the front door.
Through the front door?
Yeah.
That makes sense? Yeah.
I might be wrong. I don't, I just have what I wrote in notes from two years ago, so I don't...
I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
If all the situations... If all the situations happened through the front door, or if there was one...
To me, it seemed like, from everything that was described, most of the time, the dog came through the screen door in the front of the house.
Anyone else have, do you have any questions? No, not for Joe?
Joe, could you just state your full name and your address for the record?
My name's Joseph Kenny. I live in 172 Russell Lane, Abington, Massachusetts. Do animal control in Whitman.
Great. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Nope, we're gonna go right down the list.
I don't know if Laura wanted to say anything, but no.
Oh, on this, maybe.
I had a question for Joe. When I was following you, were there any dog on human bites?
The only one was when two dogs... The only one was when two dogs were being separated. But there was no broken skin, somebody had a jacket on and there was no broken skin. It was just, they reached down and it seemed like an arm got in the way. But there was no dog on human interaction other than maybe while things were getting separated. So it wasn't aggressive toward human, it was more so separation. And in those, I usually say with these, it's not like it went out after a human, so it's not a dog aggression thing. There was no broken skin, so there was no like quarantine paperwork or anything for that situation.
And then I only have one other question. It sounds like every time the dog came out of the front door, screen door, but the front door wasn't running loose in the neighborhood when these things happened?
There was one incident that was a couple, like two houses down, I believe it was two, maybe three houses. Yeah, I'd have to, yeah, and that was, that was one incident. The rest of them were right there in front, within the front of the property.
Just because I wasn't in...
Yeah, the dog, it wasn't, and we haven't had calls on the dog running at large or anything like that. It's just been when the dog gets out and it's usually directed at a dog walking by or something along those lines.
May I say something, Ben Dean, may I get up? Because I do have something that is important to that. Since those are the facts, I wouldn't know the facts till I heard them.
You could just state your name.
Laura Howe, 185 School Street, Whitman, Animal Control. That had nothing to do with any of these cases. But I want to point out something very important. First off, I'm glad nobody was hurt and I'm glad that dogs were not hurt either, seriously. But there is a, in the dog world, that I know we're not all living, there is a, three circles of property. In the house and in the yard, a dog by nature and cannot control this. This is animal behavior, just like yours or mine would be to eat or to feed our family, it's just innate in them. Protection is the key. They're gonna protect their family and they're going to bite and they're going to be aggressive. You'll see that if the pizza guy comes and you know, you come on your property and your Fido who's, you know, never barks is going crazy. You can't control that. When they go out into the third, they usually do not bite because they're out, it's just a weird thing, they're not in their first or second circle. The fact that this dog bit another dog though, you have to take into consideration animal behavior, period. Dog on dog or dog versus running cat or squirrel is always going to be different than human and human saying hello. It just is how it is. So if you could just keep all of those facts in mind and for the audience, because when we have situations like this, we have divided neighbors which we want to come together. We have incidences that could have resulted in anything but minor things. These, dog attacks are extremely dangerous and very serious. Animal control officers have been killed many times. We just don't get the notoriety of it. So I take it seriously. But we also are working with an animal that has animal behaviors. So working with the people to correct these behaviors always to me seems important. But for everyone to understand the behaviors is what I wanted to. I hope that somewhat helped something.
Thanks Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, Linda Minehold, could come up please? Just state your name and address at the beginning, thank you.
My name is Linda Minehold. I live at 66 Washington Terrace, Whitman. And my dog was one of the ones that was attacked. That was the fourth time, the most serious time. Mine was done last November and I did have the air horn. And I was able to scare the dog away. And it did bite my jacket, but my dog, we were close enough to home, we were at home. She was bit and thrown to the ground and it got her, it's in the pictures, it's got her paw. So I did have to call and go to the VCA and get that taken care of. And just because it is, that was the third time, the most serious time. And I did, I did call and, you know, I did not call the Board of Health though, because I didn't know I had to do that. The most serious time was this last time. And it was young children getting off the school bus from the Carmley School. And because I was coming up, because I can't walk my dog to that section of the terrace anymore, I take her down to the park and walk her on a leash. And when I came back, the children had just got off the bus, so I stopped at the corner. The kids were all there, several of the parents that had their dogs on a leash. And the dog Coco came about and attacked the other dog from the other side of the terrace, Hazel. My problem with all of this, I did get out of the dog, my dog was in the car seat with a strap. And because I did have the air horn, because we do have coyotes also in the neighborhood, it did scare the dog enough. But Hazel also got bit and there are pictures of that. My problem is because the children were there. And they could have gotten tangled, okay, in the leashes. And that was the most scariest thing, to see the children crying and upset. The person that had the dog, okay, that was also upset. And they were all dispersed. He came out and got the dog without saying a word or apologizing or anything and went back in his house. And that's what's happened and transpired. So this was the most serious. Those kids were right there, did not get tangled, thank God, and get bitten because that would have been another whole issue. He has had dogs for a long time, he's a good neighbor. But this dog, it's a rescue dog, unfortunately has not been a good dog for them as a family or for us in the neighborhood. And I feel very unsafe. I do not walk that side of the terrace with my dog anymore. I walk with a few friends and they drops me off and I walk the other side of the terrace. I just feel that this last one is horrible. I'm sorry. And there was a dog's all of his life and I understand that, but this rescue dog is out of control. And I just feel that it should be retrained, rehomed or something in order to have the proper stability so I can walk my dog in my own neighborhood. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have questions?
What was the last part you said, I missed it? You said, you said you would, what would you like to see happen?
I would like to see the dog either rehomed or retrained or something, you know. I just don't think that this particular breed or whatever it was of dog and its training has come to the point that it's dangerous, you know. And like I said, I do have the air horn because we do have coyotes and I have had to use it in these two instances. And I don't feel that I should have to do that in my own neighborhood for a dog that's not properly trained or can get out of the house that easily. And when those children were there, I was scared. Those are neighbors, it wasn't even my own children. But these are all Carmley Elementary School, probably first grade through fifth, that were in that mix. Could have got in the leash and could have got bit and then we would have had another whole issue. And that makes me very sad.
Any other questions? Dan, any other questions? Nope. Thank you. I'm going to read a couple of other names, I'm not sure if these people are here. I'm actually going to check the sign in list. But do we have a Nancy Cunningham here? A Jessica Denton? Or a Shannon DeBrugge? Are there any speakers in support of Linda's, Linda complainant's position? No? Okay, and then if we could have William Healy, please.
Can we say, sorry I'm a bit, just that the three names that you mentioned sent in letters in support of Mrs. Minehold? You know, given descriptions of their, the situations that they were involved in, you know, basically stating the same kind of...
They did and, and those were, I think, the incidents, a few of those that Joe described.
There were incidences.
Yeah.
Two were actual dog bites. And the other two, there was no like cuts or anything like that. It was more like aggressive interaction.
I could certainly read the complaints if you think I should, no?
I just think letting people know that there were, they formally did write a letter.
Yeah.
Basically with similar sentiment to Mrs. Minehold.
In support of Mrs. Minehold, they absolutely did, they were all on for the complaining. Thank you. And William Healy, if you'd like to speak. And if you could state your name and full address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is William J. Healy Jr., 30 Washington Terrace, Whitman, Mass. I'd like to start with giving a little background on my dog. Coco is a chocolate lab slash pointer. He's a rescue. He came from Mississippi. Down south, they raise their dogs very different than we do up here. They only have one purpose, a job. When they're, they don't believe in birth control or anything like that. If your dog gets pregnant, they don't want them, they put them in a puppy kennel, which is where Coco came from. Puppy kennel, it's about the size of a small gym, completely covered with wire like a cage. And in there are nothing but young puppies, he was eight months at the, at the time. And all breeds, all types, large, tiny. There's a big large trough for water and a smaller one for the little ones. And once a day, they'd bring in slop of food. No human, or very little human touch. He survived, when I got him, I called the place down in Mississippi and found out what was going on and he explained just what I just told you. He, being medium sized, he was picked on the bigger ones. The little ones came up and would claw him all the time, so he was sort of being picked on both sides. When he was done, when I got him, I found out that he didn't like dogs and he didn't like humans. So after I talked to the place, I decided to get to work. I've had one training at that time when I got him, but I've had three or four since then. And I worked on getting used to people. If I take him for a walk, I'll have him come and I make him sit and not let the other person not talk to him and let him go up and touch sniff and it worked out fine. I did the same thing with dogs in the circle. I would walk around and if he saw the dog coming, I would just stop, pull him aside and let them come up. Sometimes I'd have them walk on one side, I'd walk on the other side in a circle and then move closer. And by the time they got together, they were best friends. Those that I got to do that, every time they walked by the front of the house, they never bark at them again. Now, since then, the past year or two, we've had a lot of other dogs move in. And because of this particular situation, I haven't been walking him. Because I don't want anything to happen to him or other dogs. So he barks only to dogs he doesn't know. Now, I'll start with Linda. Linda has a small dog with a lot of fur on him. And when I would walk with Coco, if I saw them coming, I'd walk up on the other side and her dog would constantly bark at him and he'd never say a bark back. I tried getting closer, no so, nothing. Times I'll be walking and she'd be coming out of her house and she'd just stand up there and the dog would bark at her, at him rather. She, I'm a little bit nervous. And I'd just walk by and he'd just keep barking until I was around the corner and then he would stop. So, now after the incident. Coco has a large backyard that's all fenced in. And Lynn was walking by the front of her house. Like she said, she was going in the back, but she went by the front, so especially just last Thursday. And when the dog goes by the house, the dog starts barking and Coco was not present for them to see. Inadvertently just started barking. Coke, I have him on a couch in a large TV room and I've trained him not to get up and go after the dogs. All of a sudden, I hear this chirping. And it was Linda and her little dog. It was a nice day, the front door was open, this green door. And I started to go towards the dog, because I wanted to talk to her, to move along to stop the barking. But he bucked up behind me and knocked the door right down and went right over to her. At that point, I grabbed him, I never heard this horn that she was talking about. If he did, I just didn't hear it, concentrating on my dog and the other dog. I'd got him off of her. Later that day, I paid five, $600 at VCA to pay for it willingly. End of the story as far as I'm concerned. The other incidents were very similar. Lady was walking her dog and their dog started barking in front of our house. And he hadn't met that dog before. And he bolted out. Unfortunately, well, she quickly picked up the dog up instead of leaving it down. Because if he went down, Coco would have gone, tried to make friends with him. But she picked, and that enticed him to jump up. Okay, and then she took off, I never heard anything about it. I heard about it in the neighborhood, but not directly from them. The other incident was my neighbor, Shannon. She had a dog, but we were new with my dog. We did have a fence, they had a fence. But I wasn't really aware of the other dog, I was more worried about him. They brought him over and he went berserk because he wasn't greeted the way I was going to do that. He finally got out the front door of the main house and went over and greeted himself. But they tried to get him, then the husband put him down. He sort of nicked him on the arm. And I got him home, we didn't have any problems after that. Did I miss anything? Did I miss one?
I have a question. So all these situations, all four of them, all came out of the front door?
Came out of the slider.
Sorry, what was that?
The, we have a TV room that has two patio doors, each with screens. And the one in the front, he bolted down or he snuck out behind me. Since that time, I have made other efforts in the house. I have two fences to get out the front door. You have, we have to go through that first, not the dog. He has not been out since the last incident.
Sorry, could you explain that a little bit more? The door that he was going out, now there's two fences so to prevent that from happening.
There's one in front of the patio door and one in front of the house door. And in order to get out, the human has to actually open the gate, close it behind him and he cannot get out. We have not had a problem since that point. The backyard, he's free to run around, we play ball with him. He may bark at him, then I usually tell him, stop or leave it, and he stops and comes back and plays. So since the last thing in April, we have not had an issue with him. Last summer, I stopped walking him because I was on kidney transplant after 12 years. And it was wicked hot outside and it bothered me, so I wouldn't take him for walking. Then I decided to stop walking him. This is when, these things happened in, in August. Since then, he hasn't been out walking. If he has, it's like at 4:30 in the morning when there's no lights out. And he's got a long leash and we walk around and do that so no other dogs see him. If he were here, he would love all you. He would meet you with his paw. That's a habit he got from the kennel. To survive, the little dogs would paw him, the big dogs would paw him. So now he does this and I've got him so that if he meets you for the first time, I have him sit and just say paw and he puts up his paw and let you pet him. And he hasn't done any harm with him. Uh, I do regret those incidents happened. I apologize them, but it has not happened since then. So.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Has there been any, now, when did you put up the two gates?
That was my question too.
Has there been any incident after the gate? Cause it's like a childproof gate. So once you put up the two gates, there's been no issues?
None.
Is there any way that that dog can get out of the house? If you're sitting on the couch and it's a hot day and the front door is open and you're letting the air come in through the screen door, is there any way, if you end up taking a nap on the couch and fall asleep, that that dog can get out of the house?
No, because the, the second gate is always closed.
Would you, would you be willing to let maybe um, one of the animal control officers kind of take a look at the gate setup? Maybe give you some pointers, like make sure that it's secure?
Anytime. Oh, you're welcome. I have a couple of things to complain about. On the letters written in by those that, that attacked, they said that the town officer came to the house. I never saw them.
If I may speak, I know that Dan Kelly actually said that he went out to the home, but nobody was home. He, and I have an email dated Monday, August 18th. Uh, I still haven't had any quarantines for Coco. However, I've spoken to at least two of the neighbors about the dog getting out somewhat frequently. The incident that occurred on April 16th, 25, I ended up not receiving paperwork from the vet. I can only assume because skin was not broken. Afterwards, I visited 30 Washington Terrace in hopes to have a conversation with them, but no one was home. I didn't lock the full property, but it seemed like the yard is fenced in, so I am unsure how Coco continues to get out. Maybe there's a way to help secure the yard and prevent further escapes. Coco is licensed and up to date on rabies, so any quarantines that would happen would end up being 10 day quarantines for Coco and the bitten dog would also be released at the end of Coco's quarantine. So that was from our health inspector.
I did go out to the. I did see that in there too.
Okay, you did, okay, yeah. And the backyard is completely fenced?
Completely.
From one, your backyard?
It's a five foot tall wired fence, about this high. He can't jump it, which is why I got a tall one back.
And if I may ask, you had said that you paid the Mineholds for some vets. Was that from the November 1st?
I believe it's the one in October. I mean, um. April.
November 1st.
April.
April 16th, that wasn't Mrs. Minehold's dog?
No, that wasn't my dog. That was the other Hazel.
Hazel, is it Hazel that you paid for the vets?
Her dog?
No.
I think it was probably Hazel. I don't.
Well, if I'm wrong, then they're right.
Hazel, she went to the vet and she had him.
She went to the, and Linda, I believe in the April, said your dog was in the car.
For the April one?
For the April, right. So it couldn't have been for the April for you. Okay, I think that Laura Howe would like to speak.
Yeah, no, I have a que, a couple of questions. I can speak about something else at the end. One, I just want to clarify to you, sir, because it is very, uh, it's very, um, not understandable. We don't do quarantines, the Board of Health does. So I am sorry if I was not on duty for a period of time and during these incidences. But Joe, his duty was just what he had done. So I'm sorry if you had felt like, um, and titles get kind of mixed up.
I only knew about this when I got this notice.
I, I remember hearing the 1-522 call and I asked Joe to respond as quickly as he could to you because I wouldn't have been able to give you that information. Um, I'm very glad that you were proactive and put up two gates, um, inside of your home. Because a lot of times what we find as the more normal is the dog digging out or jumping over or finding a hole. Um, so that's good. I wanted to know for knowledge, because I'm very well aware of everything you've said. I'm, I'm very well aware of breeders and rescues and puppets. And there are three different things sadly. What you described is very typical. I could have already told you that you would have went home with a dog like that. But we can always correct that. Who, how old is this dog approximately?
In November, he'll be four years old.
And how long have you had him?
Three and a half months, I mean, three and a half years.
Years. And who did you use? You mentioned you used a few dog trainers. Who did you use for dog?
The first one was at the kennel over in Brockton.
Okay.
Up by Massa Sawyer.
Okay.
I've had, um, when I first got him, that's where I had it done, because I got it from them. And when they met other dogs, he had no issues. They all had leashes on, they were allowed to run around and get friends. There were three other trainers. They were good, but they weren't always that good. They weren't looking for the specific issues that I had. The last one was the fourth one. Of the lady, she did a nice job inside, but you can't take them out. And that was my problem, because when he gets out, he wants to go. He's gone. And I couldn't do anything on a leash with him.
Right.
Off leash, I've tried, um, even in the backyard in the fence. I'll work with a leash and I take it off and he just wants to run. So, um, I've stopped.
And then you've kind of gone by their direction of what they showed. Would you be willing for me to suggest, um, in, when I go to your home and we have discussion, a dog trainer, um, I certainly don't mind saying his name, Bob White, B and B Training. He works with very hard dogs, dogs that have come from situations like this. He works with police dogs, he works, he's amazing.
No problem.
He can retrain a dog at age 10. Um, he, you know, if you could work with him, I think he could get you to a better place. My other suggestion to you, um, and I only want to make this public because there might be other people in your situation that have these same issues. Once you stop walking your dog, your dog gets anxiety. We all need exercise and I know that your love for the dog is great and I know these people are very concerned. Animals are, are all the time, a, a small little animal, a huge animal, they're all dangerous. It is how you correct these behaviors. You've tried to do the right things. It's very unfortunate. We cannot in the law ever say, oh, if the children got hurt, if the elderly couple walked down the street, that didn't happen, so we can't even imply it. It's a known thing about animals. The other thing is many years ago, we stopped removing animals from homes. Because Coco being a problem in your home would then be a problem in Falmouth or Rockland. It makes no sense.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I am very grateful that no one, no children, no other, anyone has been hurt. But I think if you're willing to do some more work with your dog, you'll have another 10 better years with your dog.
Currently, I do walk him, but I take him out of the, the circle.
Yeah.
And I take him over to Ames Noel Park.
Right.
On a short leash or a long leash.
Yeah.
Um, usually in the morning when there's not a lot of dogs and he just runs through the woods and has a good time. Or in the backyard, I have a couple of balls and we just.
Right.
Let him run.
I have a 120 pound dog that I absolutely take only certain places.
I hear ya.
And the 4:30 in the morning is a great thing.
Nobody else out there.
But I, and I, I truly feel that.
That's fine.
Dog was lucky to have you, but they are right. You need to have the dog in control and never worry what's going to happen. And I feel we, people can get you to that.
Now, if you, we have this trainer. I can tell him now, one of the problems you're going to have is, um, he's going to be looking at me through the whole thing.
Bob White has no issue with any of that.
Okay.
He's like dog god to me.
He tells him to do something and then he looks at me, is that okay?
Yeah. It, Bob will help you.
Just like my wife does with me.
And he'll work with any member of your family.
Do we need, um, are we looking for a motion or something now? Which, which.
So if, if we're finished here, then I would just like to ask other, any speakers in support of William Healy's position? No, okay. So, um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter who has not had an opportunity to do so? Okay, so all the speakers have had an opportunity to speak. Therefore, um, the evidentiary record is closed and this hearing will be continued to our next regular meeting solely for the purpose of issuing a determination by vote of the board. But I'd like that to be after Joe and Laura can go out to the home, if that's okay with you?
That's fine.
And take a look at the, the double, um, gate situation. They could report back at the next meeting, so the next meeting will be September 9th. And then.
Report back sooner so that you could do it September 9th.
Okay, that would be perfect.
Put the neighborhood at ease and, and everything if you like.
Sure, and then once we have that information, I think the board could take a vote at that point. That sound?
That's fine.
To everyone, okay. So I would just like to thank you all for coming and for participating in this hearing. The select board will make a written determination after the next meeting, which will be provided to the complainant and the dog owner and announced at our meeting after they take that vote. And copies of the final determination will be on file in the town administrator's office and in the town clerk's office.
Hey, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Um, we also will be notified if the dog from this point on gets out with the gates. So I mean, you know, if, if all of a sudden.
Somebody knows about it and reports it to us.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That always came.
Right, somebody has to.
I usually be devoted on 0238 too.
So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to speak for my dog.
Thank you, it's a difficult situation. We appreciate your, your patience and support.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that does conclude the dog hearing. So Laura can come back up here to the select board. All set, until the next meeting. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
I could recommend taking the next two out, flipping the order of them. The open space survey may inform the Park Ave School.
Go open space first and back a second.
Oh, fine.
Maybe.
Alright, okay, so we're into old business. So, um, what did you say, you want the open space?
If we do the open space first, it may inform our discussion on the Park Ave School.
Okay, alright, so we'll do that next. I know business, uh, open space surveys, listing, binding, whether.
And we actually have Jason, uh, if you want to speak on any of it, um, you're, you're free to come up.
Sorry, I'm on the agenda and I was like, oh, maybe I shouldn't be there.
So yeah, I had sent this in, um, as part of the discussion on the Park Ave School. So let me see if I can pull up the open space survey. It was in the, the agenda packets for everybody, so if you had a chance to review it. Uh, I think bottom line was the town has a lot of opportunities to improve open space and recreation access. You know, some of the top line findings were facilities for our youngest residents, um, you know, particularly adolescents. You know, there was concern about sidewalk conditions, um, trash and litter, uh, more services, bike parking. Yeah, dedicated spaces for teens, um, senior friendly spaces. It mentioned pickleball specifically, I think in a couple of places. I think potential skate parks and dog parks were specific callouts. Public events and programs, um, things that we've seen an effort, you know, particularly coming from the cultural council the last few years. But it's, the fact that it's still coming up in this survey is, um, you know, gives us some direction to push. Uh, I think unfortunately, a lot of this stuff costs a lot of money that, uh, we don't necessarily have right now. But I, I think on some of the things that we could afford, um, this gives us some good places to start looking as we look toward capital projects in the future, potentially use for community preservation funds. I did reach out to our town accountant for the balances on the community preservation funds and they look pretty good right now. So if you remember, there's three categories of CPC funds. And this is as of June 30th. After adding 10% and then subtracting the things that were appropriated at the last town meeting. Looks like our historic preserve has $17,000 in it. Our open space recreation reserve has $54,000 in it. Uh, and our housing reserve has $9,000 in it. However, the undesignated funds, so each of those gets at least 10% allocated every year, uh, up to 5% allocated for administrative expenses. The rest goes in this undesignated fund that can be used for any of those three, three, four categories. That still has $586,800 in it. So we do have some money to use for some, um, particularly open space and recreation projects, but, uh, community housing or historic preservation as well out of those $500,000. Did anything, I mean, anyone else want to weigh in on the open space plan? Yeah.
I thought it was a thorough plan. I like all the, the public feedback. I thought it was put together in a, in a way that was easily like readable. If it's not on the website, we should definitely put it on the website so people can see it. I mean, I think it's a lot of really good information. Big takeaways for me, I think, given our financial situation is taking what we currently have and just tweaking it slightly so they can be more accessible to people. You know, I think just some intelligent fixes could, could really make, like I said, some of the elements that we have for open space and recreation and just make it that more, much more user friendly or put some maintenance into them. You mentioned lighting in there, you know, like towards the winter months, it's difficult for people after work to, to walk at the park. But tons of people walk at the park, you know, in like the spring and the winter and the, I mean, the summer and the fall. You know, like adding some lighting, maybe lighting was in there, like little elements like that may, might make that space more accessible to people through longer, longer months. It'll be a little bit of an expense, but you know, this is a little bit of a give and take. But I thought maybe some strategies like that would, uh, would work out well. But I don't think, I mean, like I would love to have a skate park. I've spent a lot of time at skate parks, I'm a huge proponent. The problem is, I've seen in some communities that don't do it properly. If you don't invest fully in like a really good skate park, then it can turn into trouble. You know, and the, a really nice skate park could be like $2 million, you know. So I don't think we'd have that kind of money for a skate park. So if we weren't going to be able to do it properly, I don't think it would, I think it'd be a lot more headaches and not really the healthy teen atmosphere that we're looking for.
And plus the town liability.
And the town liability. But the other thing that stands out to me is like the kids on bikes. There's a lot of kids on bikes, which I think is outstanding, but the safety issue.
I was in Boston under, going under a tunnel.
So maybe adding some simple elements that make bikes, bike safety more a priority. I don't know if it's just that easy, but if there are some intelligent things we can do to help with, keep kids safe on bikes, because obviously that's a concern for a lot of people right now. So if that was to merge into the plan or if it's something separate, but that's.
I noticed.
With the bike situation that's going on though, a lot of that is education to the kids. Education from the parents to the kids, the community. With the bike situation that's going on though, a lot of that is education to the kids, education from the parents to the kids, the community. Because not once or twice, but so many times, I don't know how many, the kids go right, right across the street, right in front of the cars, pop a wheelie's going all the way down the street, four or five across the street. Many altercations with people I know asking for them to move out of the way. And this is not one particular group of people. This is all areas of town. So maybe having some kind of more conversation around the importance and safety, because it would be god-awful for anyone's child to get hurt. We all know how children are invincible, you know, they don't think of these things. And any resident of any community would be devastated if they hit anyone, let alone a child. So maybe more education around it than anything else, because there's plenty of places they can ride their bikes. They're just choosing to ride four or five or 20 or 30 at a time down the road unsafely, in my opinion.
Funny you should say that, because Old Colony Planning Council has a bike training course. They go to the police stations, they go to the middle schools, they set up, I've seen them set up things in the police parking lot where kids are riding around the cones and stuff like that and teaching them the skills. But they also teach them the laws about what they need to obey. And there is a committee that does that for Old Colony Planning Council. My question on the survey, I looked at it, there's a lot of interesting things, but how was it conducted? Who answered the questions? Actually, Whitman residents or you got that many people?
Yep, so you want me to do this here or you want me to come up?
Yeah. No, so I mean, why not, you're here.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
You're welcome. Good evening, Jason DeRozier, Senior Planner for Housing and Public Engagement, Old Colony Planning Council, 51 Joyce Ave, Whitman. So I am a Whitman resident and I do use the open spaces in town, so I am as invested in this project, both at a personal and a professional level. So we had about 275 survey respondents. After filtering out, after filtering out non-residents, we had 273. So there were only two people who did not live or work in town. In terms of promotion and outreach, we had sort of a little thing on the sign out front, letting people know that there was a survey. I posted a number of times on the Whitman Facebook groups, sent it out on email, folks that I know, did some door knocking with neighbors. We had a block party, so I pestered people with surveys. I dropped off hard copies of the surveys to the library, the Council on Aging, the Whitman Housing Authority developments. I have a background in community organizing, so I really believe in robust community participation. So yes, we had 273 Whitman residents who completed the survey. I also did something that was said earlier, thank you for the kind words, however, this is not the report. I'm about, this is just the survey analysis and summary. Approximately as of today, 80% done with the plan. It's at 129 pages. I just have one more section to write. The action plan, the 10-year action plan for the open space and recreation plan has 10 goals with a number of strategies for each of those goals. Everything from acquiring and preserving, conserving more space to trying to figure out how to have more revenue generating recreational opportunities. Something that I heard in a focus group that I did with a couple of parents, came up with the idea of similar to swan boats in Boston and Hobart Pond, but like goose boats. Since, you know, Whitman has a goose population, maybe sort of, what's the word, leveraging that? Or like canoe rentals or something like that. To Justin's point, yes, towns are dealing with tight budgets. In the action plan is also a column where you might be able to find grants to help support some of the stuff. So for example, skate park was one of the most recommended sort of things, second to dog parks. And the Tony Hawk Foundation, for example, does give lots of money to sort of promote skateboarding as a healthy alternative for young people. I did a focus group at Women Hanson High School, made sure my daughter did not see me in the school, but talked to a young, a lot of students at the high school. I also talked to a lot of young people in the park, just riding around playing basketball, so and so forth. There's this feeling that, you know, they don't, they're not, they don't feel welcomed at the park in a lot of situations. And want someplace where they can sort of go and sort of be free and welcome and sort of like not feel like they're being a nuisance to some of the folks. Who like maybe more of a calm sort of, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? More of a leisure sort of stroll through the park and not hearing like, you know, teenagers like yelling and riding their bikes through the park, so on and so forth.
May I say something? Since you brought up the geese, I happened to see that like the number one thing was goose poop. And I just wanted to assure people that we really don't have control of certain things, not animal control, because I never took it as that. But the only thing that I know ever to work to deter geese would be spritzing of water, which wouldn't be feasible on memorial fields or anywhere really. I personally think it would be a waste of water. But then what would happen is then the goose poop would be slipperier and the fields would also get muddier. So I wanted to just bring that up because where it was such a high thing on the survey, like number one thing I read, I didn't want the residents to think that it went unnoticed. But I absolutely love how you turned it all around to be goose boats, because I never would have thought of that, but that is actually very, very.
Yeah, the number one maintenance issue and control issue was the geese management issue. There is a strategy or a goal within the 10-year action plan to develop a humane goose control strategy. Now, I don't know what that is, I don't know what that looks like.
Wildlife.
But that is, but there are towns that have, across the country, that have sort of many international examples in terms of like how to humanely mitigate and control goose populations.
I would just refer to wildlife, because I don't, I have no say over wildlife. But I do know that we also have no control over something that flies and lands. And I think that over the years, the geese have come wise to the pretend coyotes and foxes and having a dog run the premise and scare them off, they're only gonna come back right after the dog.
In terms of responsible parties, animal control is not mentioned anywhere in the.
Never, never. And, but I just wanted people to know that I was aware, I've heard it mentioned about the park and how it's hard. I usually walk around in bare feet, but if literally you're walking at the park, you're usually in shoes and it all is just under your feet. So, you know, to me, it's the least of any problem. But I like the idea of these goose boats. And I like your involvement period. I come from a time that we had Carlisle Bowling Alley, that's how old I am. And we do, kids and people have the very wrong impression that Whitman is anti-kids and lately anti-older folks. Well, I have kids, grandkids, and I'm an old folk. And Whitman loves everybody and we're trying as a community to make the Whitman work better for everyone. And involvement like yours is key. So thank you for all you've done.
I'm looking forward to reading the full report. Thank you.
Yeah. So just in terms of next steps, so my goal is to have the draft plan ready for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Steering Committee, for them to review at our last meeting, which will be September 23rd, I believe. So I'll have that to them by September 10th, so they have the two weeks to sort of review it. So that we can have a productive last meeting in terms of review. And then after that point, I will work any feedback that I receive from them into a final draft that will go out to the public, the general public and women for comments. So everyone in town will have the opportunity to review the plan and submit comments before it's adopted by the select board. Sort of meeting to be determined, and then it's sent to the state for final review and their approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I was probably responsible for calling it a plan, but yeah, this was the survey findings, the plan we published, open to the public. But I thought it was important to have this discussion before we go into our next piece of business, which was the Park Ave.
Yep, school. And that's next on the list, Park Ave School, Mary Beth.
And so right back to me. So where we left this a couple of months ago, legal counsel would like us to give them a direction for what we would like to do with the property. Particularly if we're going to try to do something that is not currently allowable under the deed restriction. And so the deed restriction says it has to be used for, I believe it's a public school, I should have pulled up the deed before I got here. But if we use it for something other than that, the current plan is to petition land court to release us from that restriction. If we got the attorney general to sign on to our petition, it would be a lot more likely to succeed. And so our counsel asked for, what would we like to do with this property as specific as we can get to petition the AG to sign on to our, our claim? So my suggestion was something along the lines that we could use the community preservation funds for, open space recreation. It's got historic trees, it's a beautiful open plot of land. We specifically carved it out of the MBTA Communities District because we did not want it to be housing. So open to suggestions from the board, but yeah.
Could we, could we say we're gonna use it to something linked to the open space plan? Is that too vague? Like the open space plan, let's, you know, it could go from just tearing down the school and keeping it as literal open space as Parkland. Or potentially like a dog park or potentially like, potentially a skate park or amphitheater, the different things that were listed on the, on the open space plan. Like it's just a plot of land that we'll use linked to that plan.
I think, I think that if we do that, we want to be as specific as we can. So it would be, you know, we'd like to make this open space with the current place where the building is to be, you know, raised or replaced with recreational facilities such as dog park, pickleball courts, amphitheater, whatever, yeah. Whatever we want to list there as the potential uses, but.
Yeah, I think you'd have some complaints about a dog park being there.
I don't think that's a great location.
Right, because of where it is. I mean, I, we got half of where the public gardens is, is leftover land.
The back half of that would be ideal for.
Yeah, that would, you know, for.
No, it wouldn't if you think about what's under the soil.
Ah, fair.
Yeah. We have to think ahead of things because dogs dig and all of that business. That was why it wasn't there with a community garden. But this is kind of a, maybe a gray area, because I never talk about, well, until tonight, I don't usually talk about animal control and this. So I want to just make it clear that I could care less the outcome, because the people vote for this. They have to vote if they want an amphitheater or a dog park or whatever. I have never been much into dog parks. That's why my thoughts, and I have several, if you don't, the town doesn't like this one, was because we're in a time that we really need to get our law enforcement and our kids and our people back together. I find no better way, and this is the God's honest truth, than animals like the dog, comfort dogs, or the police dogs and the people that run those programs. Whether they be the canine unit or the comfort dog unit or anything like that, and our people. The community reaction is endless. It changes families, it changes outcome of people. People see that in the work that the police dogs do. I've seen it for decades. Then if you have that there, right, you're bringing in people from out of town, you're bringing interaction to the people and the law enforcement. You have a dog kennel or shelter, whatever you want to call our place, built by grants, separate, because we have to have privacy, those people do their own thing, we do our own thing. Then the museum, you could have it right there, it's not that big of a thing. And the dog park, because nobody, me and Joe, we're 24/7, 365 days a year. I'm not too sure if anybody knows that, but we are. So with us coming and going, the police coming and going, and the presence of the police, whether or not they're canine unit or not, they're law enforcement, they're looked at as hopefully respected. And then the museum and the dog park, I don't think anybody's gonna trash it up. I don't know how things can be done and built and whatever. And if I had to step down as ACO, because of course this is a thing I'm elected, the people elect me and then they don't elect me, it's that type of thing. But my job that I voluntarily say every year, yes, I will do 365 days a year for 19 hours a week, I will step down from to see such a project happen and someone like Joe or somebody else come in and have something to work with. But other than that, we could look at a rec center for the children that could, well, I shouldn't say children, because they're, you know, teenagers, a lot of these kids. But you could look into a rec center that may have indoor arcade or bowling ball or basketball is huge. But then I'm not too sure how the grounds will fare, you know, because that is a true concern too. So amphitheater, I just want to know, are you paving Colebrook Cemetery for parking? Because I don't, I can't, I can't grasp an amphitheater. If you think dogs aren't gonna be wanted, what are we gonna do, eminent?
No, no, it's slightly different, at least my vision is different than I guess.
Yeah, and I would love for you to explain it, because then maybe I would be more on board with it, understanding.
Yeah. I think money-wise, building a building right now isn't realistic.
No.
So constructing some sort of building for like a rec center or senior center or the facility that you're talking about, I think is not something that the, that a community would embrace right now and something that we can afford. But something like a dog park is cheap enough that we could use with like community preservation funds or like grant money. It's something that's doable that we can maybe do there. I'm not saying it should go there, I'm saying, but a project at that level.
I think Sitchwood built their dog park for about 30 grand in CPC funds, with matching grant.
Right, and I want to point out Quincy Shelter, the same people that wrote up the ASPCA report for me from New York that came down about, I don't know, five years ago now-ish. They're responsible with that same report for the $6 million grant-funded and built shelter. Whitman does not need $6 million shelter. But if they can get a $6 million shelter, then we certainly could get something. And I think that a lot of projects can be put on the table, grants found or not found, and that community might come together. I know that I'm a dreamer in a lot of ways, but you gotta remember that I rebuilt a man's home in the name of Jesus over four years and I don't swing hammers, I don't even know about carpentry. And I see this, this gentleman here who gives his time, and if you remember back a little bit, there was a gentleman that built like a whole thing for the sports all by himself. So I, I really think that we're in terrible times, you turn on the news, and as a community, everybody loves Whitman, we all have our different reasons. It isn't townies versus anyone else. Once you live in town, it's your town. And I think we could do great things if we come together, I really do. And I'm not opposed to any of the other ideas, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't think of like a concert going on there.
Yeah, so to finish my thought, I think we come to the table as people on the select board with ideas, but I like the process that they've gone through, the strategic process of reaching out to lots of people.
Love it.
Putting together like, you know, a specific goals with action plans, you know. So if we could link what we're doing to that, but with some sort of money involved. I mean, we're in a tough spot because we want to be specific, but we don't have the plan in front of us to have the specifics. So maybe if we just delayed a little bit further until we can look more closely at the plan and then I think linking something up that way. I think, I just don't want it to be like, I like the strategic process and I'd like to tie it to that, not just something I feel very strongly about, so I'm gonna kind of place it on.
Yeah, after speaking with Justin, the Park Ave school site was removed in terms of mention in the open space plan, so that you guys could go through your own process and not have redundancies.
Yeah, that's a, we didn't want to include this in the open space plan to potentially get ourselves in trouble with the existing deed restriction until we were released from it. Although I think the open space plan could give us some ideas of what would go well there, so.
And we have cleanup to consider there as well.
So, and I think the Hanson appropriated, I think it was a million dollars for the McQuan School teardown. This is probably similar. I don't know if they spent the whole million, but that was what they voted.
Right.
Okay, next, Open Planting Park Ave, what are we gonna talk about? What's next?
Budget.
Oh, budget, yes, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll read if you don't mind, just because I put some stuff together. The number one priority for the summer has been, for me specifically, has been to identify strategies that will help the budget. We have been working hard on this, I've been talking closely with Mary Beth almost on a daily basis, and have analyzed lots of potential options. As of today, there are three primary options that I'd like you to consider and one additional update. The first strategy that I would like you to consider is the restructuring of the Plymouth County Retirement Liability. This, in my opinion, is a strategy that could have the biggest impact on the budget and one that I personally am recommending. Basically, instead of paying off the $20 million liability in approximately five years, which is the assessment we're currently paying, we would pay off the liability in 10 years. This would significantly lower our annual assessment and take some pressure off the budget. Specifically, we know that next year's assessment will go up by about $260,000, from 3.5 million to 3.8 million. But if we restructured the debt, and these are preliminary numbers, but if we restructured the debt, that would decrease to approximately $2.5 million. That's a saving of approximately $1.3 million that we could desperately use in the operating budget. The downside of restructuring, however, is that we would obviously pay more money in interest. For this reason, there are financial consultants that we've talked with that are really weary of this option. So that's one potential option that I would like you to consider to help with the budget. The second strategy that we would like you to consider, I mean, to help with the budget, is to account for the indirect costs pertaining to the voluntary trash recycling service. At this time, we do not properly account for indirect costs pertaining to trash service, which was an unintentional mistake that needs to be corrected. If we implement this strategy, we would increase recurring revenue by approximately $100,000 per year. But there is a downside. If we implement this strategy, meaning if we communicated with the other parties involved and everybody was on board, we would likely increase trash rates by about $25 per year. So that's the given to take, which we obviously want to be very careful about doing. The third strategy that we've been working on pertains to ambulance account. Our goal is to become very efficient at collecting ambulance bills. We've reached out to a third party collection service, and with the chief's support, we want to get very good at collecting bills so we can be more efficient about that. And then lastly is something that Mr. Galvin referenced during the meeting. Heidi Hosmer is the chair of the Board of Assessors, has communicated with Mary Beth about a potential release of overlay funds back to the general fund. This is still a work in progress and may or may not pan out, but if it does, it will certainly help with the budget to the tune of about $200,000, is Mr. Galvin. So those are four things that we've been looking at. There's some give and take, I think, with all of them, but each, I think, in their own way could help with the budget for sure.
So I think, if I can, yeah, weigh in, I think that your last two points, the overlay is, you know, technically out of our hands, but as Mr. Galvin certainly indicated, we should, you know, communicate with the assessors as they discuss that, I think, on September 2nd. So I plan on attending that meeting to kind of relay our thoughts, if we give any here. And collecting, you know, ambulance bills, you know, we raised rates a couple of years ago, if we're not collecting the money, it seems like a no brainer, collect the money that we're billing. On the other two, those are definitely more difficult decisions. So indirect costs, we talked about a little bit during the override discussion as a potential, something that could come about if the override failed, because it is money that we are, you know, we are spending staff time in the town administrator's office, in the collector's office at the DPW, in sending these bills out, in collecting them and managing the trash service, time that we are not charging the ratepayers for, I guess you can call ratepayers, the people who are using the trash services. So that is taking that cost and spreading it across the entire tax base when it's only those people who have, you know, it's not the people living multifamily developments or the senior housing or condos that are paying, they're paying taxes, but they're not paying for trash pickup. So it's, it's a more equitable way to allocate those costs. However, it is, yeah, taking money from our tax, from the tax base right now and putting it onto ratepayers. So it's a difficult decision, probably the correct one, but will be, I think, a hard discussion for us to have. And on the retirement issue, definitely something that would be a difficult conversation because it is not advisable by financial advisors, but, you know, I talked to one of our colleagues in Hanover recently, and they weighed in that they were looking at this as well because, not just because the crunch is so difficult right now, you know, Plymouth County Retirement assessments are creeping up much faster than we can afford, but if you look at five years down the line and the sudden drop off of what we're paying in those assessment increases, you know, our colleague was a little more worried about what was going to happen then, and is it just a free for all of town departments that have been crunched for a couple of years? Hey, here's $3 million dropped into the budget, what do we do? And so we could smooth that out, pay a little more in interest, but give ourselves breathing room now rather than go through a challenging period. I still don't know where I fall on that one because, you know, logically, pay more interest is not usually a good idea, but.
I'm obviously struggling with this as well, but from a strictly financial perspective of saving money on interest, then why wouldn't you want to pay it off sooner rather than later?
Correct.
Of course. But we're going to be expected to pay a $20 million liability in five years. That's a huge amount of money to pay off in five years. So it's kind of like, why would you pay a mortgage off early if you have a hole in the roof or your house is on fire? You know, right now, our budgets are super tight. People have made it clear that they didn't want to support an override, you know, so we're going to be wrestling with this year's budget coming up, and then the budget after that, and the budget after that for five years. Plymouth County Retirement's going up eight to 10% a year. So it isn't going away for five years. So in my opinion, why wrestle with it? Why don't we just go, you know, cut our losses, go to the 10 years, and we have a much more cushion to work our budget so we don't have to have an override? I mean, it's practically speaking, we won't lay people off, we won't depend on an override, and we'll be able to get through our budgets, you know, so we'll be back on kind of solid ground. To me, practically speaking, it makes sense, but financially, it's a little bit of a hit.
Do you, Sean, do you have a figure on how much more we would pay?
It's about, it's a little bit tricky because the straight number is about $5 million extra to go from five years to 10 years. But it's a little bit more tricky because if we got $20 million, right, and then we paid the assessment next year, which would be $3.8 million, that means we'd still have a little over $16 million in the bank. So we'd be gaining some interest on that $16 million. And then the following year, we might have to pay $4.2 million. So the amount of money that we'll have will be going down in each of those five years, but, or in each of those, that period of time, but we'll be gaining some interest in the time that it's in the bank. So it's not just that we would have to pay an extra $5 million because we'd be gaining some interest along the way, so, but we'll be paying some extra interest.
John Galvin, High Street. Just to circle back on the overlay fund from the Board of Assessors, that's basically free cash. It's one-time money. It's a stopgap for fiscal '26, this current budget right now. If we use that money for public safety, which is probably where it'll go if we get it, it's actually making fiscal '27 worse because in order to maintain those services next year, we won't have that money again. So to listen to what Mr. Kane is proposing with the retirement fund, to me, seems like a no brainer. The only way we're going to maintain services next year is to go after another override, which we all know most likely will not pass. If we don't have an override, next year will be brutal because we're going to want to maintain public service, public safety again, but we've made the budget deficit worse because we're using one-time money not only for the $100,000 or so of free cash we use, but now another couple hundred thousand to maintain the budget this year. To do what we're doing with that is, to me, a no brainer. Yeah, it's going to cost us more money, but it's freeing up a million dollars is what we're proposing. That's going to solve a lot of problems next year and bring back a lot of services, and it's sustainable because you're paying this over 10 years now, it's something that can be sustained. So I think that's a wonderful idea.
Mary Beth?
We just don't want to forget, too, that next year we have the debt exclusion for the South Shore Boat Tech. So I think we could have a debt exclusion and an override both, you know, that's a lot to put forth. So, but that debt exclusion, we do need to deal with at next May's meeting. And the other thing that I just wanted to say is whenever this OPEB, I mean, the pension liability, unfunded liability is paid off, whether we do that now in five years or whatever, my hopes were that most of the savings wouldn't just be infused back into the budget. The big elephant in the room is our OPEB unfunded liability, which is millions of dollars as well, that most towns, when their pension liability is paid off, yes, they may be taking some of that relief into the budget, but a lot of that, they put towards their OPEB liability. And when we pay off our pension liability, we will still have, even though we deduct from employees, active employees' checks, 9% plus 2% if they earn over $30,000 a year, we take that out of their weekly earnings, we send that to Plymouth County Retirement weekly, so they get that as a pay as you go. But the, even if we were to pay off our pension unfunded liability right now, there's still what's called normal costs that we still would be assessed for every year going forward. Maybe only 10% of what we're paying now, which is drastically, you know, lower, but it is a cost. And that cost really is for our active employees' future pension contributions because they'll be retiring and collecting a pension till the end of their life. So what they're paying now certainly is not going to cover what they're going to collect on average in their retirement. So, so much to consider.
Chief.
Two parts. I want to report, we did have more revenue come in on the ambulance aspect this year. We had $71,764 coming through a CEP program, which is the Ambulance Certified Public Expenditure Program. That is when we go through, not we, let's be honest, my administrative assistant, Amy, spends weeks, if not a month, going through every nook and cranny, submitting to the state to see where we weren't reimbursed to our fullest. This is not a formal, this isn't a program we have to participate in. This is, we do it voluntary, and she works very, very hard to get this done. It's been higher, and it's been double in the past, it was 148 now 143. They've really tightened up the parameters on it. So it's really a lot of work on Amy's part to get that 71,764, which got infused back into the ambulance account, would go back in, came in June 30th, I believe. On Mr. Kane's thing, Mary Beth has been working diligently on the third-party collection process. We have the packet together, I have talked to council, that needs to be a vote of the board. When I've raised rates, it's the vote of the board, and when we've waived these fees previously, it's been a vote of the board. And to be honest with you, when you hear about it, the board's going to hear about it. So if that's the chair, you know, if the board wishes to move forward with that, council advised me that we need a vote.
All right, Chief, the amount of that money that you're going to, you know, that we used to do would be a couple hundred dollars, and now we're talking about a lot more. What's the process of collecting pass, or what reason would a person not pay an ambulance run, we'll say?
We found recently, a lot of people confused. We've had a lot of people come in recently saying, I can't pay this, we've gone through it, Amy's gone through it with them. On the back of the ambulance billing, there's an area where they can put their insurance on, and a lot of time, it's an oversight that they just didn't know. You know, they get confused, they see a big number, they panic. So we've been working through that a lot recently. Some people know the system, and some people just can't even afford their co-pay. I think it's an educational process, the ambulance company sends out, I believe, Mary Beth has it too, six notices for the ambulance company. There's another avenue we'll talk about, we're meeting Tuesday with the accountant to talk about policies and procedures for this process. I'll have some more info on another aspect, recouping money from car accidents that I've recently found out through the Fire Chiefs of Massachusetts. We don't recoup a lot of money, unless we transport. There's a couple of programs out there for that that we can look into, but I just wanted to make sure that we all knew we were hitting from the same side of the bars box, that it'll be a vote of the board.
Yeah, I couldn't, I mean, I couldn't say enough good things about the way the chief has handled this. I think just the point that we're at in the budget is we need to be as efficient as possible. So like really zeroing on this and taking some of it off his plate even and allowing people who do this for a living to like really, you know, become very efficient at it. You know, I think it'll have an impact on the budget. It's not something that, I don't think we want to be completely black and white about. I think still having the chief some discretion over this, I think is really appropriate. But it just, because of the nature of the budget, we have to be that much more serious about it. So we're trying to take serious steps to make a real impact on this, and I think it will.
Well, I think if, if you draw, the ambulance, if you take somebody to the hospital, the hospital usually gathers their insurance information.
That's for hospital billing.
Huh?
For hospital billing, sometimes, it's an educational process.
There's no way that you can ask them to give that feedback to the collection agency?
We do it through our ambulance billing company. We have a third-party ambulance billing company that we negotiated with several years to get a better rate, four or five, whenever I'd be, '21, we negotiated with them, '21, '22. We ended up getting a better percentage. They're the ones that handle all of our billing, and they're the ones who direct the people on how to do this. But just as of recently, I've even had retired, you know, people come in, I can't pay this. Well, did you submit your insurance information? Well, no. So that's an easy step, it's an educational process that we can work through. As far as, I think we need to set firm policies and procedures on how this is handled, to go along with what Sean said. I think there will be extenuating circumstances that we can address collectively, but if that's what the board chooses to do, we'll move forward with that company. Mary Beth did a lot of work finding it, so we'll be able to find it.
Okay, Chief. Next agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Which next, ER report, Town Administrator's Report?
Okay, so sometimes I have nothing, but tonight I have a few things. So one item in my head here was the Community Compact Best Practices Grant. I just put that down because we did get a letter from Lieutenant Governor Kimberly Driscoll congratulating the town on having completed a third Community Compact Best Practices Grant, and that was the development of the Financial Indicators Dashboard and a financial forecast, which provided key short and long-term benefits to the town. But just on August 12th, I received a letter from the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, informing the town that they approved an award in the amount of $101,934 for weatherization at the police station. So the facilities directed Todd DeCunno, work with Chief Hamlin, to secure this grant. So that was good news. Another item that I just want to mention is the Whitman Community Electricity, and that's the Good Energy Municipal Aggregation Program that we've been working on for quite a while now. So Whitman Community Electricity is the name of the program, Good Energy is the town's consultant, and Dynergy, which you'll see on the mailers that went out, is the supplier who won the bid. So I wanted to give a quick update on the Good Energy Outreach Proposed Timeline. All communications that are mailed out for the Whitman Community Electricity from the town will have the town seal on them, so you'll know that it's official, it's from the town. August 15th, postcards were mailed to residents and businesses in town. They were set to arrive at people's mailboxes on August 18th. They did, because I received two or three calls already today regarding the postcard mailing. On August 19th, today, the opt-out package mails. So that will include a letter, a reply card, a postage-paid return envelope, and a language access document. The opt-out package is scheduled to hit everyone's mailboxes on the 22nd. That's where this particular plan is an opt-out plan. So if the residents do nothing, they will automatically be enrolled in this Whitman Community Electricity Plan. So they can opt out, and on September 4th, there'll be a general public meeting at 6:00 PM in Town Hall, conducted by Good Energy, to answer any questions residents may have on the program. September 12th. September 22nd, the opt-out period ends. When I say that the opt-out period ends, that's so residents who just say they don't want to be part of it, they're never enrolled in the beginning. But if somebody doesn't opt out within this timeframe, they still can opt out of this program at any time that they want to. And then October 1st is the official launch and the power flowing on meter reads will be from October 1st onward. So there's two parts to the bill. Let me just take a quick look here.
Where is the, what is the percentage?
The...
The price?
The price, okay. So I've been asked by, not to release that yet until the opt-out information is received, but let me tell you this, that the rate that we got, we locked in for 50 months and it is lower than National Grid's current rate.
Everybody is.
So...
Because I know what my rate is with, I'm not with, I'm not with, you know, National Grid, I'm with somebody else. And I know what my rate is.
Okay.
I was just curious if they're going to be lower. Why would that, you know, I would just opt out.
Right, so anybody who has somebody else for a supplier on another plan will not automatically be enrolled in this because, you know, you'd have to check with your supplier to see if there's any penalties for getting out of, of your plan.
I didn't even receive a postcard, Dan, I'm sure you didn't either. I didn't receive a postcard because I'm on a third party.
Right, yeah. So I didn't receive a postcard.
You didn't get the postcards on it because you're on the other plan. Okay. So there are two parts to the bill, is the supplier and, Justin, the other portion of the bill?
Uh, delivery.
Is the delivery. Okay, so it's the supplier that's changing and that will be Dynergy. Everything else on the bill will appear the same, National Grid bill, all the other terms, conditions, discounts, or anything that you had would still stay in place. So those are just some key dates, just to expect some information in the mail. And very important, if you do have any questions, attend the general public meeting on September 4th in Town Hall at 6 o'clock.
Good news. Mike.
Okay. And then, let's see, just my last item is our library director, David Aronson, submitted his resignation. So he will be leaving on September 26th. He's been employed with the town for the past four years. He's done an excellent job as our library director. He's increased the program offerings over the years and the town has seen a significant increase in participation in the various programs, especially in the very popular children's programs that he's done. He's really revamped everything over there, he's done a wonderful job. I've enjoyed working with David over the years. I wish him much success in his new job. He'll be working with the Library Board of Trustees to ensure a smooth transition to a new director. He'll certainly be missed, but they'll get that job posted and...
And just to tell you, I know the reason he's leaving is he's got a job, he's got a job closer to home. He lives down the Cape, so this is a long run for him.
It is, it is.
He seemed like a real nice guy, did a great job.
Great to work with, very professional.
Came in as our assistant library director, I believe, back in, yeah.
Three ago, checked his, his start date, 21.
So is that completing?
That completes my Town Administrator's report.
And we got the budget, so that completes everything, we need to go into executive session?
We're passing over, passing over three executive sessions.
Right, we're going to pass over, do I need to write what, state what the executive session is and do we need a motion to pass over it? And we do that in executive session, right?
You should be able to just read the, the fourth one, the meeting minutes.
Yeah. So all right, so I can, we can pass over. So we're going to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with, with or act under the authority of the general, of any general or specific special law and federal grant in aid requirements to review and approve executive session minutes of 3/26/24, 4/9/24, 4/23/24, 5/6/24, 5/7/24, 6/4/24, 6/18/24, 7/23/24, 9/17/24, and 10/8/24. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Now a second.
Second. Yes, yes.
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 All right, we're in executive session.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.